The views and opinions in this program are not those of CISA seven or Spectrum.
All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our March School Board meeting. We'll kick things off with roll call. Beth, if you could help us with that, please.
Good evening. Becker.
Here.
McCoy.
Here.
Sit Nakow.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Batten Warren.
Here.
Vanden Hoofel.
Here.
Warren.
Here.
All right, all seven board members are present. I would like to point out that we are joined tonight for the first time by Laura Leighton and Warner. Warren, our newly appointed school board member. She is with us virtually. But Laura, it's great to have you here. Thank you for joining us and I'll do my best to kind of keep an eye up on the screen, but flag me down when you're ready to jump into the conversation.
Will do. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Yep. We are also joined tonight by Superintendent Steve Merly in person, along with members of his cabinet who are with us virtually. We also have two members of the inner city student council with us here. Emily Kopp and Ian Hop. So thank you for joining us as well. With that said, we will jump into the pledge of allegiance.
Flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Next up, we have our statement, and that will be read tonight by Ms. Don.
We educate all students to be college, career, and community ready, inspired to succeed in our diverse world.
Thanks, Tom. And then finally, in our opening activities, we have our collaborative commitments listed here. These are seven statements that were drafted by the board several months ago now in how we want to try to conduct our school board meetings. If anyone is interested in seeing those collaborative commitments, they are posted on the agenda. All right, moving into the open forum session, we have our inner city student council report, and I will hand that over to Ian and Emily.
So for the interest city student council report for March eighth, at the district level, we've got good news relating to students are being welcomed back to the to school in the cohort blended learning model. And fall sports are beginning practices for upcoming seasons. At the John Dewey Academy of Learning, there is a movie theater Thursday that's still being held that's been going on. There is an upcoming student council town hall meeting. And students participated in a student leadership day sponsored by the Illinois Holocaust Museum and Education Center. Students were encouraged to use their voice to make a difference and create an action plan for social justice issues in the community. And the group hopes to create a student outlet for opinion in the school newspaper. From Prebble, we had the Prebble Link Crew helping guide freshmen in their return to in-person learning. The state DECA competition was this last week, and we had eighteen state competitors. And advisory is holding Kahoot days on our Fun Fridays. From Southwest, there's also Kahoot meetings that have been running well. From the new school of innovation, there is an esports, which is a competitive gaming team that's been operating since the fall and has been successful, and they're seeking to get more students involved. From West, there is a snowman building contest that was held in the month of February. And winners of the contest received gift cards to local businesses in the area. And the West Link Crew helped welcome freshmen back to in-person learning as well. And for East, there was a successful transition with welcoming freshmen back to in-person learning. Student Council created back-to-school videos to model conduct during in-person learning, and the band will be able to put together a halftime show to perform.
Thank you so much, Emily. Ian, did you have anything to add? You look like you on the spot. You're good?
Awesome news. Yeah.
All right. Thanks, Ian. Appreciate it. Thank you. Appreciate that update. All right. Next, we have a recognition that we would like to share, another one of our wonderful staff being recognized at the state level. Steve, you want?
Certainly. So we are very fortunate that Chris Coller was recognized by the Wisconsin School Safety Coordinators Association for his work. And in particular, one of the things that they singled out was his work on the Wisconsin Department of Justice School Safety Grant. And we're also pleased to say that he was recognized for using his knowledge, skills, and abilities and working with smaller school districts that don't have the privilege of having someone in his position so that he could share some of the lessons learned from here in Green Bay with other school districts across the state. So congratulations to Chris.
Thank you for that update and congratulations, Chris. All right. And the last item under open forum tonight is our public forum. We have four people who are registered to call in. Just as a reminder, during this pandemic time, as we're transitioning back to in-person board meetings, we are still going forward with people registering to call in. If you're waiting for a call tonight, you'll get a call from an out-of-state number through the Zoom platform. And Josh will still help us with that. So Josh, if you want to bring up our first caller. There you go. Hi, Alicia, are you there?
Hi, how are you?
Hi, thanks so much. Good. If you could start by introducing yourself and giving us your address, and then you have five minutes to address the board.
Okay. This is Alicia Van Stratten. My address is three, three, nine, six Cottage Hill Drive, Green Bay, Wisconsin, five, four, three, one, one. I really just wanted to call in and absolutely thank Rhonda and Andrew for really pushing to have our kids in person. My daughter, I had called in, I was trying to be brave and strong at the last time I called in, and I was that that broke down in tears. But I had called in, gosh, a couple of weeks ago, and my daughter, who's in fifth grade, was just ecstatic. Think make a difference. And I know I've talked to Eric a little bit about this and some other people, but it's almost that psychological effect of, oh, my gosh, like, I have a reason to get up in the morning and get dressed and brush my teeth, brush my hair, and get like my lunch packed and get excited where it's not that, you know, she was necessarily in a state of like constant depression, but just really having a purpose. And for her, academics obviously was huge and a huge reason for her to go back to school, but honestly, it's that practicing of social interaction. And these are just such formative years for that. And she struggled, you know, she has ADHD and anxiety. We're very open about that. And so it's just, there's so much more to school than just academics. I mean, that's a huge piece, of course, but just her ability to navigate the social the social world, friends and teachers and rules and authority and all that fun stuff is just, it's so critical, and you can really only get that when you're in person. So I just wanted to say a huge shout out. Huge thank you to Rhonda and Andrew for really pushing and listening to the constituents and really just hearing our pleas for allowing our kids to get back into school. And I'm really hopeful that tonight can be a good discussion about getting the middle schoolers and high schoolers into more days. My son is an eighth grader, and while he's done pretty well, he's the opposite of my daughter. He definitely has hit a wall, and I would say he hit a wall probably the last, probably about two months ago. And so that concerns me because he is a good student, and he has, you know, he's one of those kids quote unquote that everyone says, oh, does okay, or does well with virtual. And he has only hit that wall and just needs to be more in person. So I really hope you guys can have a good conversation and set a a date for returning for more days in person for middle school and high school. But I just wanted to call in and share that. So thank you.
Thank you for calling, Alicia.
You bet.
Have to come back to that second one and try again. Here's Mary Jo.
Mary Jo, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear. Yes, I can hear you.
All right, great. Thank you so much for calling. If you could start by introducing yourself and giving us your address, and then you have five minutes.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for the time tonight. My name is Mary Jo Short. Excuse me. My address is nineteen ninety-two Spring Creek Circle in Bellevue. Before I begin my comments, I want to thank all the teachers and support staff that worked hard last week and today on getting our students back to in-person learning. I also want to thank board members Rhonda and Andrew for their continued support of our students and families in making this happen. I also want to thank all board members as well as teachers, support staff, and district employees for your hard work. I'm speaking to you tonight as a parent of two girls that graduated from the Green Bay School District, a former employee of over ten years, a concerned community member and taxpayer, and finally, I am an aunt to two boys in the district right now. I want to say that I'm deeply concerned and angry over the board's inability to get our students back in the classroom before now. I hear comments in the community from frustrated parents who feel like some board members are not listening to their concerns of returning to in-person learning. As I was preparing my remarks, I looked for some guidelines on what the duties of a school board are, and I found this on an educational resource website called XQSuperSchool.org. School board members are elected members of a community who pursue a vision for local schools, reflecting the needs of the students, the wishes of the voters, and the consensus of the community. It goes on later to state they base their decisions on input from the superintendent, families, teachers, students, and the general public. I feel like in this case that I'm hearing too many people in the general public feel like they are not being heard. Also, it goes on to say, as controversies arise, school boards pursue consensus, reconcile differences, reach a compromise, and find solutions. School boards are accountable for how schools and students perform. School boards accomplish this by creating strong relationships with parents, teachers, students, and community members. It is critical that board members listen to and respond to community concerns. I also found on the Green Bay School website, and I know you people know this, but I just want to state this for those that are listening. This is under School Board Powers and Duties and under the caption of Vision. Number one, involve the community, parents, and staff in creating and continually developing a shared vision for all students. Number two, engage with the community to place the highest priority on students and public education. Number three, ensure all district staff and community focus on meeting the needs of all students. I don't believe you have implemented this vision during COVID, and the needs of all students are definitely not being met. And I am going to come back to this vision statement a little bit later. School is essential, and it should have never been closed this long. COVID has proven to be the most difficult issue to find solutions, yet the majority of school districts in Wisconsin have opened, most of them full-time. Many other businesses, churches, daycares, and other entities have found solutions and a way to operate. Now, finally, after a growing amount of outside pressure, a limited plan has been implemented. I believe it is too little, too late. I understand the difficulty and complexity of the situation, but that's what you are there for, to solve problems, to be leaders, to work together and as a community, not be one of the last schools in the state to open. A large number of parents, students, and community members have voiced their concerns and asked for solutions for months. Now, some members agreed to a limited opening, and we are grateful, but it is not enough. Full-time should be the goal. But again, you waited so long, we will now have to wait through spring break and yet another virtual week after. That only leaves a couple of months left in the school year. To add to all of this, there has been a total decline in our standards during virtual learning, and it is appalling. Students are learning at a fraction of what they should be. This proves virtual learning does not work. What is more disturbing is the large number of students that are failing. This goes back to your vision statement to place the highest priority on students and to focus on meeting the needs of all students. How the needs of so how will the needs of so many students that have not been learning at the pre-COVID level be met? How will so many students that are failing ever be able to succeed? Will these students ever recover from this long absence away from the classroom and away from learning? Families in the community are now looking for other options in their education in both private and school choice to other districts. I would think that the large number of those choosing other options would be alarming to you. I would think it would make you want to work harder with the community.
Mary Jo.
Should be the backbone. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry. That's the end of the five minutes. If you have, if you have something to just wrap up with, you can can wrap up.
Uh, yes, would you allow me to do? I just want, yeah.
I mean, you've got a few seconds. Go ahead.
All right. I just want to remind you, you are elected officials, even no matter what you believe, what you stand for. It's important to be able to work with all, you know, points of view and be able to come to a common solution with them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Barbara, can you hear me? Are you there, Barbara?
Hello. Yes, I am, Eric. How are you tonight?
I am good. Thank you for calling. If you could introduce yourself and give us your address, and then you have five minutes.
Thank you. Barbara Tana, twenty-six, fifty-one, Seneca Court, Green Bay, Wisconsin, five, four, three, one, three. Parent of proud junior at West High School, pleased to go back today. First of all, I would like to welcome Laura Leighton and Lauren to serve our community. Thank you for stepping up to fill the vacancy and being part of probably one of the most critical educational times we are facing as a district. I echo a lot of the sentiments of the last two callers. I recognize what a heavy lift it is to get us back to the point we are now. As a member of Green Bay West Parent Group, I have a window to what the staff and teachers were preparing and what it took. That said, we're not done yet. I also think that the last caller made some very valid points that we have waited a long time. Now, that means we need even more swifter and more rigorous action. I would be in favor of taking a look at a reasonably swift deadline to go to four days with assumption that Wednesdays are still needed for the in-person and virtual advisories that help progress for the learners who are still choosing the virtual option. Our COVID numbers are going down. Students and teachers are experiencing classroom activities and in-school activities. A couple of weeks of that should yield some very interesting information to help validate what's working and fix what's not. I think that it would be reasonable to take a look at an April fifth or April twelfth deadline. I think sticking to it would be really important because some of the frustrations I hear from the staff side in various schools among friends is that it takes, you know, going back and forth with different plans was challenging. So let's make a plan, let's stick to the plan. And then looking forward, we need more rigorous some summer programming, and I know that there's work to be done there, or maybe is even in process, and looking at next year. We're now in a paradigm of how can we identify the gaps that exist, particularly for learners who are not thriving in an online environment? And how can we help close those gaps at all grades? I do want to compliment the district on the substitute teacher program. I actually attended it. My license is pending. And hopefully, the district will cease it to hire me as a substitute teacher. I stand with you, wanting to solve these problems. I want to serve you, and I want to help. And I urge us all to come together and let's get school back in motion for four days in mid-April. Thank you.
Thank you for calling, Barbara.
Still having problems with that other number? Try one more time. But it's going directly to voicemail.
Okay. All right. Then we'll move on and hopefully that we can get in contact with that person. We all have the contact information, so and certainly can call in next meeting as well. All right. That takes us through the open forum part of the agenda. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that a board member would like pulled out for discussion? All right, hearing none, then I would look for someone to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
I.
I.
Opposed? All right. Consent agenda. Oh, you're good, Laura? Okay, good. Threw me off there. Consent agenda is approved. That takes us to number five, presentations, legislative updates. Brenda, do you have a legislative update for us tonight?
Yeah, I wrote I wrote up just a quick summary of the Governor Evers' proposed budget. I think probably for based on previous conversations that we've had. The increased money slated for student mental health supports is encouraging, as is the increased special education funding proposed. And early reading on the budget from the legislature. Time's up. There seems to be bipartisan support for increasing broadband accessibility, but not a lot else in there is receiving. You know, at least early bipartisan support. Of course, the Joint Finance Committee has to meet and determine, you know, what they're going to put forward. And I have not heard of any Joint Finance Committee hearings yet, but I'll keep an eye out for those and let you know if those are coming up. Turned off. There's also a start date bill that's out there. There's actually also being supported by the governor, which allowing local school boards to decide to start school before September first. I know the governor mentioned that it was a way to help school districts get kids caught up, except it doesn't increase the length of the of the school year at all. So if we start early, we we would just early. And I don't know if the board is interested in putting forth a or having me draft a letter in support of this bill. I know I had a conversation with Steve talking about, you know, if we start early, can can we add extra days to the school calendar? That's not in the bill at all, but certainly something that we could put forward if we're interested. I don't know, Steve, if you wanted to say anything more about that.
So we are appreciative of the fact that they recognize that coupled with summer school and enhanced summer school programming that starting earlier and decreasing that gap between summer school and the start of the regular school year would be a real plus for a lot of our students. But we would like to see hopefully some additional funding allocated for districts that do have an interest in not only starting early, but making sure that we go right through the end of what would normally be our regular school year, so that there'd be an extent funding for perhaps up to ten days to allow us to have some additional instructional time during the next school year.
Laura. So just to be clear, then that extra money would go to things like staff salaries and whatever staffing we would need. Just like the rest of the year, that's our main category of expenditure.
That's correct.
Okay. Rhonda.
So would we be committing to full-time then, five days? If we were to ask for this, would this be that's okay. Just cut me off. Sorry. No, just if, I guess I want to understand if we're going to take a position on this bill, and we're going to ask for some funding to correlate with it, would we be, as a district and a board, committing to full-time five days a week?
Yes, that's our intent. As we start the next school year, we're presuming that we're going to be in whatever the normal next is, and that we're ready to go five days a week when we start school in the fall.
Great. Thank you.
So our board member is interested in sending a letter with the suggestion that that possibly adding enough days to get us to the normal end of the school year. I'm seeing lots of head nodding, Laura. Okay.
Do you do you imagine that we would put the letter out there, then, I mean, are we just sending a letter without any public feedback on it? Are we?
Um. I don't know that we've, you mean, bringing it back for? I mean, we could bring it back to our next meeting and just have, you know, board weigh in with that. So if you want to just, you can just put it on the next meeting, Beth. Okay, that'd be great. Thanks. I'll have that ready to go.
Yeah, I'd be interested. I mean, in support of the the flexibility, I guess, would be something that I would support. I'd be interested in, as a district, what exactly that would look like and what we would do. You know, certainly when I I have some mixed feelings about extending the school year. Now, we're taking, you know, away their summer end of August, you know, so while, yes, we want to close those learning gaps, and if that's a part of the recommended plan to make up for some of this five days a week, and we go back in August. I'd be interested in hearing that, but on its face, I wouldn't just blindly say, yeah, let's start school earlier without understanding some of those other implications that that would come with that. So in favor of supporting the legislation, but then as a district, what does that mean for us? I'd look forward to that conversation.
I just offer that we had that conversation with a large five school districts last Thursday. What we're really seeking is a maximum flexibility. So I, all of us collectively talked about the benefit of being able to start early. Many of us talked about, would we like to extend? If so, how many days? And so really, what we're looking for is some support from the state to provide that per diem funding for any additional days that a district might be interested in adding.
I would like to, and as far as public feedback, I would like to, I would love to hear how people feel about that. And so if we are, but on the agenda, people can, you know, talk about it during the open forum or whatever, and give us some idea if there's any, I don't know, I'm just be curious to know what people think about that because it'll affect a lot of families.
Not only families, but businesses who rely on our high school students for summer employment and just summer plans and, you know, so.
I would expect a heated debate.
Great.
And I would think that, well, this goes back to your your comment, but I, it doesn't, it wouldn't necessarily mean we'd have exactly, you know, those extra days would look Would it look exactly like the rest of the school year? It may be catered to need and things like that too, I would think. And, you know, to your concern of just requiring everybody to come in for 10 more days of school to really think out who would benefit the most.
So you're talking more, potentially more targeted?
Yeah, and I wouldn't put that in the letter. I mean, you know, the letter is just saying, hey, you know, have you thought of this? And this would be really helpful to us. I would think it would be helpful in the letter to give some, you know, suggestions of of kind of what we would be thinking in terms of those extra days.
And that's where the flexibility would come in, so.
Yeah, so it's mainly the, yeah, the flexibility. That's all I have. Other questions? Okay, thanks.
Alright, thank you for that Brenda. That takes us on to the discussion portion of our agenda. We have kind of Gbaps forward with two bullet points and I'll hand that over to Steve.
We're pulling, and I think Beth is going to cue the slide deck up for us as she's doing that. I, you know, we thought about how to help share with you some of the events that had occurred last week. And rather than us speaking on behalf of our staff in the buildings and our programs, we actually reached out to them. And asked them if, in their own words, if they could share some of the things that went well for us last week as we brought our students back. And so what you see in the slides are their words and their data points and things that they thought best reflected the work that they did over the course of the last week. As our elementary students returned. So if you want to just, you can start going through that and I'll just try to keep with you. So I, the first one on there, I, we have a symptom screener in place. I, and actually I think Josh was sitting behind me, so I can give a shout out to him. He and his technology team put this together from the first iteration to the current one. It has now gotten to the point you can do it in about 10 seconds. It's very, very smooth and easy to do. And so the nice thing about it is it's it's functioning. It allows our school nurses to keep track of those who have answered yes to any of those questions and follow up with them. I, food service, I, our nutrition services team has been absolutely fantastic. You could see on the screen there, they served almost 66,000 meals last week. They're providing food service support, both to those kids that are on campus and those students that remain virtual. What you see on the screen there is one of two mobile food distribution vehicles that we have. Those are electrified, they've got coolers in them, they've got, you know, if you think about going to a food truck or something like that, I think this vehicle right here. So it's really nice, we can get into lots of neighborhoods because it's very mobile. And with the the trailer format is is easy to get in and around town. You can see an example here, people were asking, you know, what if you've got staff members that are unable to come back into work? And so through either the Americans with Disabilities Act or Family Medical Leave Act, we have some staff who are unable to return to work. What you see in front of you here is an example of one of our classrooms where the children are present. Their teacher is virtual, kind of hard to see that, but that's on the screen that's right in front of you. And we have a monitor in there working with the kids while they're in there. And so you both have students that are physically present and virtually present and the teacher happens to be virtual here. And we've had many kids who have made the election to come back in person when they initially thought that they would be virtual. We had 214. Students who made that choice to come back onsite. So that means that as of right now, approximately 27% of our students remain in a virtual environment. The kids I have, you may look at this as a positive or a negative, but it's become somewhat of their new normal for our kids. They're very comfortable with their face coverings, whether it's inside or out of recess. A couple of examples of a couple of our kiddos here is they enjoy some time inside and then outside. And again, face coverings have not been a problem for us at all this first week. Headstart, and I joked with one of the parents who was sending one of their students back who was sure they were going to cry. And their child wouldn't. And the folks at Headstart said that because the kids already knew each other and knew their staff, they were very excited to come in. And they didn't have that normal first day separation anxiety that they often face. So they said it went very, very well. And I'm not aware of any parents that cried either, at least not, not at the drop off. You can see here one of our lunchrooms and you can see at least a couple of smiling faces at the forefront there. Kids have done very, very well with this. Depending on the school you're going to go into, you're going to find a little different methodology for how to seat the kids. A lot of it depends on the space that's available. Probably the biggest challenge we've had is that we've had to add some extra lunch shifts. So lunch takes a little bit longer now, it might start a little bit earlier and a little bit later. So the schools are getting creative about how to offer some snacks for kids. If you're an early lunch, what do you get in the afternoon? If you're a late lunch, what do you get in the morning? So we can make sure that the students are not hungry and focused on teaching and learning. Example here, I, we've got a support, this is one of our our support staff here on the right hand side. But we heard from buildings throughout the district, just what an exceptional job. Our support staff folks did, our monitors, our food service custodians, just really stepping in to do anything that was needed in order to get this first week up and off the ground. And, you know, needless to say, there's always some challenges that you have the first week of school. In this particular environment, we had a few others. And so whether it's our our staff themselves or our kids, just really did a wonderful job last week, ready to go. This is a quote here that came to us from one of our folks over at Lombardi. You'll remember that we've got the sixth graders and the ninth graders that started last week and seven, eight, 10, 11, 12 start this week. And they really appreciated having the sixth and the ninth graders in there with some dedicated time to acclimate them to the building, to their schedule, to the staff, just to the way that they do things at the middle school and the high school. And at Lombardi, you can see from her comments that the request is, could we actually take a look at doing this in the future? Because it worked so well for the kids from an orientation standpoint. You can see our freshman class being welcomed here and I, ready to go. I've got some upperclassmen that were part of that welcome process to make sure that they were able to get around school, find their classes. I know we were actually monitoring them on the, on the security cameras as we watched them go through their first couple of passing periods. Just seamless, very, very smooth. The kids did a great job moving through the hallways, maintaining physical distance, getting from here to there, not congregating. I know that must be an incredibly hard thing to do for the students as they haven't seen each other in so long and yet they really did an amazing job. I, you can see, in here, we got a couple of kids, we wanted to give you some examples of some of the physical environment. You can see, it's a little hard to see in there, but you can see the plexiglass shields. And again, I'd remind you that those were put together by the folks in our facilities department. When they went out and started looking at purchasing pre-manufactured ones that we found to be a little bit expensive. Our crew went out, got the raw materials and made them for us. That really helped because they could fit our furniture. So you can see these kids are rolling away, they've got the smart board up in there, they're working at their workstations. But really just done a wonderful job. At the bottom, I would note some people that sometimes are unsung heroes for us. Our library media center staff, our tech integrators, our district tech support. Needless to say, they were busy, busy, busy last week. And they stepped up just as they have this entire pandemic process really behind the scenes, but providing incredible support. I, Ford Howard, they had a really neat opportunity where they celebrated each child, both those that were virtual and those that were physically present. With really an opportunity to focus on them. As the teacher said, you know, this is something we would have done at the beginning of the year. These kids kind of know each other because they've seen each other in this virtual environment. But they thought it was really good opportunity for them to re-acclimate and get to know each other a little bit better. You can see the reflection of the flag flying out at Weekweack. She was really excited about that, wanted to make sure that we saw that as a symbol that they were back in action and their kids were back. You can see again, this is a little bit easier to see. You can see some of those plexiglass supports there. These are kids at Franklin Middle School. And again, these are our sixth graders that came in in advance of the seventh and eighth grader. So you can see that the class is a little bit smaller. Remember that in cohorts, if you've got about a third of the kids that are virtual, we've got about a third of the kids in on Monday and Tuesday. The other kids are in on Thursday and Friday. That's a real plus for us because at the middle level and the high school level, remember, kids are rotating all the time, different class periods. They're moving through the hall, spending a lot more time in common areas. Using the cohort, we only have about a third of those students onsite, Monday, Tuesday or Thursday, Friday, which gives us a lot more space in the building. And we struggle, I think I shared that with you over the course of the art. Process to move this way. We really struggle with the physical distancing, that six feet guideline that the CDC has in place is very, very difficult for us to attain. There are times and places that we can do it, but there are many other times that we struggle with it. Having the students in the cohort really gives us a leg up on trying to be as compliant with that as we can. I, and again, this is a great example. People have asked, what does it look like with students that are virtual and students that are onsite? Great photo here that shows the kids that are virtual up on the screen. They look not unlike we kind of do in our Zoom meeting here where you've got a bunch of people that are on the screen there. We're here physically present. You can see the teacher on the side over there. And this gives the kids that are at home the opportunity to see the kids in class and vice versa, and then they can participate as one group. I, our social workers did an amazing job. We struggle with students and families that are homeless and trying to meet their needs and trying to maintain connections with them. They did an amazing job. They reached 90% of those families. They're still trying to reach the other 10%. The goal is to make sure that they have a place to go, that they have their school home, if you will, especially those that are coming back personally. For those that are remaining virtual, they want to make sure that they've got the community supports to allow the kids to participate. Then the last one on here, it's a little bit of a celebrate and also just a note of awareness for you. And you heard one of the callers talk about this. Our HR team has done an outstanding job getting us more substitute teachers. I believe, as I understand it, it's been a bit of a chronic problem here in Green Bay. So they were working really hard to make sure that we had more on staff. You can see that the 161 substitutes actively working in our schools, 40 of them are new to the district. We just had a training program in place, as one of the callers said, some of those folks are still waiting for their certifications to activate. So we think this number is going to go up. We also had 24 existing support staff who have now gotten their subteacher certification. They're able to do this because we do the training in-house. That's a lot more convenient and effective for us. And probably then the last thing I'd offer for you is just a reminder that even though we've had that success in getting additional substitute teachers on, we did struggle last week. It's a bit like a game of musical chairs. When the music stops, one hopes that you have enough adults to fill the seats. Unfortunately, that was not always the case last week. So you may have parents that told you that their art music or PE classes did not occur last week as they should have on all days. And that's simply because we had to pull some art, music and PE teachers and put them in the regular ed classroom. There were also many days where we had principals that spent all or part of their days in classroom substitute teaching. And also certified staff here at the district office building who we had to deploy out to buildings to fill those roles. So we still struggle to make sure that there are enough active adults in the. To man all of the positions that we have out there. We're, we're close, but on any given day, we're not actually meeting that. And so we're still struggling to make sure that we have enough people available to run all those classes and staff all those support staff positions. So as the, as our caller said earlier, we're always looking for new substitute teachers. We're hoping that as the vaccine process rolls out throughout the community, some of those who may have been waiting to get vaccinated will have that occur. And then they'll come back to begin actively substitute teaching for us. So we're hoping that that number goes up here in the course of the next few weeks. But again, we just wanted to, in their own words, share with you some of the really good things that happened last week. Our students, their families, our staff did an amazing job being ready to go on Monday and and hanging together through the week. Making sure that they finish strong. So our congratulations to them, our thanks to them, just really amazing job. So I'd open that up for questions that you might have about last week that I might be able to answer for you.
Any questions specifically about the first week of operation? Go ahead, Brenda.
I'm not entirely sure if this can be lumped into the first week, but in general with elementary, the Wednesday. Can you speak to what is going on 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 Wednesdays as as much as possible?
Certainly, and I know that virtually Vicky and Nancy are with us.
There we go. Yes, and Vicky and Nancy are with us virtually, and so I definitely welcome them to to step in here and add to it. But I think one of the things that's really important for us all to remember is that we went through and looked at all the different models that we could to support our students and their families as we looked at this transition. And one of the things that we heard repeatedly from our students, from their families and from our staff was really an interest in being able to maintain continuity. With their teacher between the transition from virtual into the face-to-face and through the end of the school year. And in order to do that, as you saw in many of the pictures that we had there, we've got classrooms that have kids that are onsite and also kids that are virtual. And so one of the things that we spend our time on Wednesday doing is asking our teachers to develop additional content that can be shared, especially with the students that are virtual. Also maintaining individual and small group contact with students that need additional support to get them through the week. And then they're doing their collaborative work with their either grade level or subject level peers to make sure that they are working together to develop those materials that are necessary to support the students. So Vicky and Nancy, I'd ask you to just jump in and add more.
That's exactly what I would have said, Steve. Interventions, this is a time for. Initiated instruction, individual, small group instruction, focus on the socially emotional needs of our students. So the student services teams have better access to our children throughout the day. Otherwise, you you covered it, Steve, thank you.
So, Rhonda, I just note, so those those Wednesdays are, for us, they take the place of what in some cases might have occurred before after school. While students had the access to teachers that they needed or during other support times throughout the day that we don't have access to right now.
I have one more question. So the conversation has also been that there's deep cleaning happening, can you speak to that?
There we go. I sure can, Pete Ross is on here too. And I know that one of the things that we've talked a lot about is the difference between cleaning and sanitizing. So we use ionizers, I think we've talked about that here before, but you know, just real quickly, those are the, the piece of equipment that we use that actually sprays in the room. It creates a mist which is then adheres to the surfaces. It's an electrostatically charged process which is designed to sanitize the room. That's different than cleaning the room. And Pete had a good analogy, I might have him share that as we think about kind of the difference between the two.
Thank you, Steve. Certainly, all buildings are cleaned on a nightly basis as they always have been. We also are doing the nebulizer in more of the common areas, main office, restrooms, PE areas where there may be some potential or higher potential of having virus exposure. And what that nebulizer does is it produces a charged particle of sanitizing mist that is attracted to surfaces and it clings to those surfaces, dries. It does leave a filmy residue though, and I would say very similar to a Clorox wipe. If you take a Clorox wipe on a countertop and then you wipe the countertop, it's virus free, it's sanitized. You know, they say on the bottle 99.9% virus free. But then if you go back five or 10 minutes later and run your finger on that surface, there is a film on on the surface. And so the nebulizer does sanitize and it creates a virus-free environment, but it does leave a film. So that's something that we're working hard to see how we can address that to make it feel not only, to make it be not only sanitized, but help to make it feel clean as well. Two different terms, sanitizing and clean.
I have a question, Pete or Steve, either one. What what we're doing in our classrooms right now as far as cleaning and sanitizing, I'm assuming that this is similar to what other districts in the state are doing. These are similar tactics that other districts have learned to use and benefit from?
Well, with the exception of the nebulizers, I think we probably have more than any other district in the state. We have a nebulizer machine in every school building and then we have. We have a nebulizer machine in every school building, and then we have multiple ones in our larger school buildings. So that those get deployed whenever they're a nurse, for example, decides that there needs to be a quarantine situation, she'll contact the facilities or the building administration, and then the nebulizers are sent to that area to do that sanitization. I don't know that there's a lot of school districts that are doing that that stuff, but we are here.
Is there anything else that we're doing as a district that is maybe out of the ordinary or an extra step that you can think of? I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I'd love to hear it if we are.
I'd say I don't know if there's anything else beyond the the use of that sanitizing process that puts us above and beyond what others are doing. As Pete said, you know, our facilities team is really committed to making sure that the cleaning is taking place. So they're doing their their regular nightly cleaning process, and that's been in place and continues to be in place right now as we go through it. And then we're layering the sanitizing on top of the cleaning.
Okay, last question. Are these extra steps of sanitizing, cleaning, are those are those things that are that fall under the CARES Act? Can we spend CARES Act money on that?
Yes, we can spend CARES Act dollars on those.
Great. Thank you.
So to back to Rhonda's question, actually of, you know, are ones are Wednesdays required for this these cleaning processes or the Wednesdays are primarily for the other, all of the other things that are going on?
That's a great question. Actually, those cleaning and sanitizing things take place daily. So that's not a Wednesday issue. The Wednesday issue is really for us, that instructional piece. And it's really designed to ensure that we can provide staff the time that they need to support the students, recognizing that they've got them in both modalities, both onsite and virtual.
Okay, thanks. That's what I thought.
All right. Any other questions about?
Just a quick comment. So in the last week, I I personally, and the rest of you have as well, heard from quite a few teachers and people that work for the district who talk pretty, pretty strongly and eloquently about the importance of keeping those Wednesdays intact, that they don't actually see any way for the rest of it to work if they don't have that day. So I just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
All right. If there's no other questions there, then Steve, I'll let you kind of carry on. Anything that you had on that secondary hybrid thing?
Certainly. So I know that there's been questions about transition from two days to four days. And how do we get to the point where our secondary students have that same access to onsite instruction that our elementary kids do? And and what I would offer to you from feedback from building staff over the course of the past week as they get ready, as they either welcomed in their sixth and ninth graders, or they get ready for their seventh, eighth, 10th, 11th, 12th graders, is just not knowing, because it's just starting, where the challenges may lie. They they recognize that they're a little bit different in the sense that, again, they have students that spend a lot more time in common areas than the elementaries do. They're much harder to obviously keep the students cohorted or small grouped as we can in the elementary level. Concerns about being able to adequately provide at least minimum physical distancing while students are passing through the hallways, while they're in the cafeterias and other commonplaces in school, and really making sure that that they're able to adhere to all the CDC mitigation guidelines, you know. We talked about the fact we can take care of cleaning and sanitizing. We can take make sure that we're supporting facial coverings and wearing those. We do as much as we can, right? We're supporting the kids with their handwashing hygiene to make sure they're doing that. But we really struggle with that that physical distancing piece. And there's a lot of concerns about what that would look like when you bring the students back. And then I go back to the staffing one. For us, that's the real key, having enough players on the field for us to run the game. And and we struggled last week to have that. We've got some concerns about what that's going to look like over the course of the next couple of weeks. We do think that there's some relief coming. We think as more people get vaccinated, some of our substitute teachers who are waiting will come back and actively substitute again for us. And we're hoping that we get to the point then where we actually have an adequate number of adults to make sure that all positions are filled every morning. So there's just some stress in the system, I would say, right now with concerns about not having any field experience with this to know exactly how it's going to look as it rolls out. And some concern about moving forward with a second phase without seeing what's happened in the first phase and what we need to learn from and modify and adjust as we move forward.
Excuse me, I believe one of the people that called and mentioned that they had enrolled in a program teaching them about being a substitute at West High School. Could you go into more detail on that?
Yeah, so that's part of that process. Like, again, we've been approved by the DPI to offer onsite substitute teacher training. So you don't have to go anywhere to do it. You can come right to one of our facilities and do that. So we're encouraging all adults who might be interested in coming into our schools to be substitute teachers to contact our HR office and see if they're interested in getting enrolled in one of those courses so that they could step up and help us out as we get through the end of the school year. Thanks, Ian.
What would these people be teaching?
Anything that's open, right? Depends on the day. And it could be anywhere from pre-kindergarten right through 12th grade.
Yeah, got it.
Go ahead, Laura.
Oh, my question is, Superintendent, if you could explain a little bit more about the challenges for the teachers in terms of staffing? I understand the concerns regarding you know, challenges following CDC guidelines and social distancing and all that. But I could you explain a little bit so everybody would understand the challenge in having teach there or having the cohorts there versus having them there for days a week or five days a week?
I'm going to get this right here yet. So I'll just give you an example. So in the areas where we had a reduction in staff through either retirements, resignations, or leaves of absence. In some cases, we've been able to collapse sections. And so by being able to collapse sections and being in a cohort, you might have 15 kids that are in on Monday and Tuesday, another 15 that are in on Thursday and Friday, and you might have 15 or 20 that are virtual. So for the teacher working with that group, they're going to have adequate physical distancing on Monday, Tuesday, and again on Thursday and Friday. They need that Wednesday because now they might have 50 kids collectively between those collapsed sections, and they need some extra time to work on that on Wednesday. But if we were to bring those students in on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday, now suddenly to have 30 students in that one physical setting. And those are the types of things that if we're faced with that, we are not going to be able to physically distance in the classroom.
Thank you. That answers my question.
So I'm going to jump in first here. So when I look at kind of two of the things that we looked at as potential barriers to to in-person instruction, certainly the burden rate was one that we had talked about for so long. I think the burden rate today in our county is it's below 100. The other piece that we talked about more recently was vaccines and have been very pleased with the availability of vaccines, the you know, both from our healthcare providers and the district. So I I want us to see, given those two factors, to try to find a way to get our secondary students back to in-person four days a week. I will say that I've heard quite a bit from our staff who have had to cover, who are scrambling places where we don't have the substitutes. So I guess one of the things that I'd encourage us to think about as a board, I know that oftentimes we've been trying to and oftentimes, you know, we've received some criticism and trying to make a decision for our entire district, and it's very difficult to do because there's a lot of different factors. So in this instance, one of the things I'd like the board to consider tonight is rather than set a date that says, you know, every secondary, middle and high school will go back four days a week on X date. If we directed Steve and the administration to start to look at each individual school and situation and where it's feasible, where we don't have staff issues, can we go back to four days a week? And in other situations where we do have overloads and we're short on staff for a variety of reasons, maybe they can't go back as soon. But starting to to be able to make some decisions that start to move us back to four days a week, and rather than making one specific date that the entire district goes back, we could ask Steve to give us an update on the 22nd in terms of what that looks like. Perhaps we can, you know, the burden rate continues to go down. Maybe some kids at the secondary can come back four days a week on the 29th. Maybe for some, it's the fifth, and maybe for some, it's the 12th. But I'd rather look for what we can do rather than, you know, focus on challenges that are in front of us and make a decision for the entire district. So that's my thought on it. Again, I want to get our secondary kids back four days a week. I'm of the mindset that we will be four days a week for the rest of the year for the reasons that were stated. And we've already said tonight that we plan to be back five days a week in the fall. So those are all promising things. So as we have this conversation, that's kind of where I am with the decision on how we can make that transition. Go ahead, Laura.
I think that's an interesting idea, but my first thoughts on that are how do you how do you sell that and 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 to the to the public and say that we're equitable? Okay, if you're if your school happens to be one that we, you know, we can't do the social distancing and we can't, you know, guarantee enough staffing and all the things that that will govern those decisions. And then the other thing is transportation. Won't that be just a nightmare of complexity if if we're some are and some aren't? And that might change. The change, the the kind of continuous changing is such a stressor for not only our parents and students, but also our, but mostly for our staff. I've heard from so many who the 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 constant changing and uncertainty of how many kids are going to be in their classroom on any given day. How many are going to be virtual? It changes all the time. That uncertainty is causing just genuine distress. So those are my first thoughts about that, but I don't want to say no yet. So until we talk about it some more.
Steve, can you actually speak to and address the transportation issue? Because at the last board meeting, I had asked, what are the barriers to increase secondary instructional time? And what was mentioned at that meeting? Staffing was not mentioned in that meeting. What was mentioned at that meeting was transportation. Can you speak to what that looks like right now?
I certainly can. So after that meeting, one of the things we did is we went back to our transportation partners and said, listen, you know, we can see the writing on the wall. We know where things are going. As soon as you get the route set for this students to return right now under the current model, we need you to start working on what a four-day model would look like. And recognize that it does take time to do it. And they had told us it's about a three-week process. So they've already started on that, and so they're well into it right now. So one thing I can tell you is routing itself is not going to be a challenge for us right now. Now, do keep in mind that the routing that we asked them to do was presuming that all of our secondary students came back collectively. So that's the routing that they're working on right now, but they will have that done here within the next week.
Yes, Stephen, I'd like to echo your statement to a board member, Rhonda Sittencall, in in the fact that, you know, Tuesday, right after the board meeting, the last board meeting, I met with transportation and we started working on that immediately, trying to you know, predict or read the writing on the wall, the handwriting on the wall. So now, you know, I'll go back to my transportation department on Tuesday, and and we're we're going to start predicting what flexibility might look like and how we can accomplish that. So we'll be we'll be working on it.
Okay, so just so I understand, so transportation doesn't appear to be an issue. But what about actually planning for the transportation? Is this something that, I mean, I would imagine we need to to preempt that, right? We need to to make a decision and plan for what we would be needing.
Right.
It's not enough just to say it won't be a problem, but I would imagine we have to plan for that.
Right, we they do what we ask them to. So what we did last time was we went and what we asked was for a full secondary return and what that would look like. So if we're going to look for some flexibility, is it all middle-level students? What does it look like? And so Pete and I'll be able to go back to them and and start talking to them about what a flexible return would look like and how we might be able to plan for that. But again, they they plan for what we ask them to do. So you're correct.
Um, so the the mention of staffing issues that there there the musical chair analogy and that there there aren't potentially enough staff, can you speak to? Clearly, there's a number that you need, right? So what I'm looking at and what I'm wondering about as a board member is what are we talking about when we're speaking to resignations, retirements, and leave of absences? How many actually happened? And how many, like, what did this actually, as far as impact in staffing numbers? What are we looking to have? Because if we don't have that information, I feel like I'm, if someone asked me that, we're just, you know, shooting blindly to some degree. How do you know what you need to make things work? If, I mean, is there a number you can share with that as far as collectively, how many people are you looking at to to facilitate a four-day, at least a four-day return for secondary?
So I don't have some of those numbers right off the top of my head, retirements, resignations, leaves of absence. We can easily get those for you. But, you know, keep in mind, we've got, it's not just the known absences from that standpoint. We still have people who get sick, right? Stripped throat was in the community last week. And so we had people that were suddenly out because they had strep throat. Unfortunately, we've had some people that have had the flu or colds. Many times those manifest themselves with the same types of symptoms that you would have COVID. They have to be out for a period of time till they can come back in because they have to have that negative test. And so we deal with the day-to-day absences and not just the known absences from those who are no longer with the system. And so that's where our stress was last week. So we were literally the entire week before that and through the weekend planning for the known absences. For us, what happened was as we got into the week and we dealt with some of those unknown absences and those unplanned absences, that's when we started having to do things like pull art, music and PE and put them into regular ed classrooms where principals wound up starting a school day until they could figure out something else as a solution where we're deploying folks from the district office building here to go out. So it's not just those known absences, but it's those unknown and unplanned ones that still occur.
Okay, that I appreciate that. But there are other districts. I don't believe Green Bay is the only district that is, you know, succumbing to strep throat and and colds, right? Is that a fair statement? And so if you think about the other districts that are back for more secondary instructional time, I would imagine they're also experiencing similar issues of it's in the community and strep throat and it's a cold, it's it's happening all around. And I'm not aware of what their staffing issues are necessarily, but again, going back to the the known absences. Do you believe there's a realistic number? You know, if we're looking at adding some time to the schedules, then what number are we looking at when we're talking about staffing? It's 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 hard to have this. We don't have enough staff, but we don't even know what we're what we need to to fix that problem. At least we don't know that. And I feel like it's something we should know as board members.
So one of the challenges, like I said, is I and and I don't know what the number is, but if we've got sections that we folded together so that it works logistically right now in the two-day, two-day cohort model, we know that we're going to need some to add some additional sections in order to make sure that class sizes are manageable if we go to a four-day model. So I do know that the elementary and secondary teams along with HR work on that. I literally almost daily, I've been in meetings with them. So I don't have a specific number for you, which, to be honest with you, I'm not actually sure you can provide because it changes on a day-to-day basis. But to give you some ballpark numbers of where we're at in terms of need, I do know that that, like I said, they're they're in there every day working on that. And I'm sure if I press them, they could give you some kind of numbers for those.
I guess when when we have community members that want to see in the last, you know, couple of months, right after spring break, they want to see some additional time in the schools, and especially when we consider that our burden rate just continues to go down. They want to see some additional time in the schools and especially when we consider that our burden rate just continues to go down, down, down. Vaccines are in play, burden rates going down, that we are holding our families hostage because we can't seem to find the staff. What is the plan to remedy that?
First of all, when you know, one thing I would share with you is right now the county burden rate is ninety four, the district burden rate is one thirty five. So our district burden rate is higher than the county. And I guess substantially, if you're looking at those kinds of the numbers. And you know what, one of the things I shared with you on that last slide in the the presentation was. The HR office has been working very hard to find subs. They've been advertising for them. They got the exception so that we could teach it onsite. You know, we are at the the mercy of those who choose to do it. And and they've increased pay, they've looked at. Many different opportunities to work with staff onsite right now. So we've got overload pay that we're offering to teachers. We're offering to compensate teachers who are willing to sub during prep period. So we're trying to cover. Trying to use every available person that's inside the system and attract every interested person from outside the system to come in.
Go ahead, Andrew.
Okay, so that that helps, that helps clarify. A piece that I didn't understand, which was, right, why do you? Wouldn't you need the same number of, wouldn't you need exactly the same number of substitute teachers being one? Rather whether I'm out of my classroom with eleven kids in it and eleven on cohort being six virtual versus. Twenty two with six virtual, so. The reason for that being that I might be, it might be a classroom of, it might be one and a half classrooms together that. Is that way and can't can't be full yet. Now hopefully that's just a temporary stopgap measure I was in. You know, I was at Preble today where I know that was one of the places and certainly not the only place where that. That occurred and I know that we're even even this late in the year, we do, you know, try to hire and fill vacancies and make progress when we can. But I I also, I also do think that we will be. We're we're, we we should be headed towards a better place because we have the. Now, we we did see a big drop before that didn't stick, but we have a big drop with vaccines going in. In arms now that is a is a game changer. I guess my concern is. If we were to just, even if, even with emotion, if we were to just say. Okay, administration, bring back schools when. When they're ready. It it seems to me that such an action wouldn't live up to what I try to do as an elected official to either. People concerned about coming back more quickly because then the administration would be empowered to to go back. You know, and it wouldn't, you know, it would have nothing to do with COVID levels and also a building could be stuck waiting till. The the twelfth or the nineteenth or maybe staffing is really hard in a building and maybe it's in. Maybe it's in May, so the uncertainty is, the uncertainty is a problem. I'm I'm prepared for and I have I have told people this because people do come to me who want to be open sooner. I say, you know, you know that part of being open sooner. Probably because of how big the district is, probably there will be one or more buildings that will have maybe one or more days that they can't. Open. If you have five teachers in a small building, get quarantined, we don't have, I mean, it could, it could happen. And I, what I'm hearing from people is is that they would rather, they'd rather try. So to leave here tonight, to leave here tonight with something that doesn't have. A more specific direction, something that gives, that just hands control of the issue over to the. Administration, I don't, I don't see how I could get behind that, although. I'm not completely opposed to the idea that. I would hate to have one school wait. Who that's ready because others, others aren't aren't ready.
Go ahead, Beth.
So so Eric, what I what I understood you were saying is you're proposing that. We table this, Steve takes it, looks at flexibility, what possible options are, comes back at the twenty second and gives us those options. What I'm hearing from you, Steve, is that transportation isn't going to be the thing that holds us up from going back. The CDC just released new information for people that are vaccinated and on spreading, does that change? So I'm a teacher and I have I have allergies and I come, can I come to school if I've been vaccinated? I, you know, it's a symptom of COVID, but does that change what that looks like for our teachers and does that positively impact the staffing issues?
It should because we will not, those that have received their second dose, then would not have to go through that quarantine process. So you remember that Monday and Tuesday of last week were the the educator only clinics. That were put on and so they did three thousand doses. They weren't all our staff, UWGB, NWTC, et cetera. But we did have a lot of staff that went through that. We've got our own onsite clinics that we're running, plus one that we're doing with Strew's Pharmacy. So within the next few weeks, we hope to have all of our staff that have had the opportunity to get in and get vaccinated. There's a run out, as you said, right, it's going to be a few weeks after that before they get their second dose. But then again, back to your original question, you know, we get that second dose and then we will not have to go through that quarantine process. And so that means that if you are symptomatic, but you've been vaccinated, you're not going to have to be offsite. You can remain onsite. That's going to be an enormous game changer for us in terms of the availability of substitute teachers.
Steve, this is Melissa. Can I just speak to Dawn's question on the question of allergies and needing to quarantine?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, so the there are going to be in there, there are people who have those ongoing. Chronic conditions done and they just work with our nurses and really the the symptoms are new or atypical. So if you have allergies and you're experiencing symptoms, you have a diagnosis of the allergies. You are not required to quarantine and continue to continue to get tested. It it needs to be atypical or newly onset, which is what requires those quarantines.
But after after they're vaccinated, if they would have, regardless of its allergies, if they would have symptoms that show up a cold, that's not something that they would need to. Quarantine for. So we're doing. A clinic, a vaccine clinic on the twelfth? I'm just thinking dates.
Vaccine clinic this Wednesday, March tenth, and then we're doing a vaccine clinic, two vaccine clinics on the seventeenth. And one on the twentieth. And then the following week, if we still have a need to vaccinate employees, we'll be doing two again the following Wednesday and one again the following Saturday. And we are getting the Pfizer vaccine, so it will be, second post will be three weeks from those dates.
And then it's two weeks after for full, full coverage.
Correct.
Right?
Yep.
So then we're, we are expecting by early April, our teachers and staff. Will be vaccinated and have full coverage from the vaccine, have received the second vaccine and have full coverage. Which, if they choose to. But if they do that, I mean, at that point, that should alleviate some of the staffing concerns, both from a subbing standpoint and from quarantining teachers because of exposure.
Absolutely.
So I just want to, you know, as as we talk about this. Certainly want to to take all of these things into consideration, which is why I, my initial suggestion was to. Have Steve come back in two weeks, talk with his team, see what's possible. A- and, you know, I don't know that there's anybody around the table that doesn't safely want to bring our secondary students back to to four days a week. And rather than hem and haw over this date or that date, you know, if there are some schools. That that can get back on the twenty ninth or the fifth or whatever that might be, then then they can provide that recommendation. And if he says, you know, but in this case, in this case, it's going to be the twelfth because of these reasons, then I would rather hear that. Than us try to wrestle with which date do you like best and in in which will, one, it could create. Staffing troubles and situations in some schools. And at the other time, if we pick the the twelfth, then other kids maybe could have gotten back sooner than that. So that that was the original reason for for that suggestion was to to get more information from Steve if he and his teams could talk about that. Oh, Laura, go ahead. On Laura Layton.
Thank you. Um, I think in hearing the discussion about the concerns about staffing, I understand that from the discussion. But I think one of the concerns is that I'm not hearing a lot of talk about is the challenges in being able to adhere to CDC guidelines. If if we do go back to the four days for high schools. And I think. We'll have a better idea after this week of how, you know, the burden rate is increasing. If if the district's burden rate is already higher than the county, that's something we need to look at and see how it's going to pan out. But I like the idea of being proactive and looking at, okay, so how can we bring them back to forties rather than waiting? Until, okay, yes, everything worked out great, let's figure it out now. So I was, I think it's a great idea to have the superintendent go back and look at what are the options for the schools. And also that's information that may be helpful in the future, looking at the space they have available for bringing people back. And and then once you have that information, we can look back at the things that. Laura had talked about in terms of equity and availability and all of those things. But I think it's never a bad idea to get that information upfront to look at options for going back to four days. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Laura. Andrew?
So I I'm still, I I'm still not comfortable with the idea of of leaving here with no motion. I think there's a wide sense in the community that there would be emotion to, I'm not saying emotion. Would have to not have any flexibility in it to come back sooner or to specify. Specify a range of a range of dates, but I think. Otherwise, people are going to be on pins and needles for for two weeks, wondering, okay, are they just gonna? Are they just gonna say, oh, staffing's hard, it's going to be late April? I don't think that's what you're planning to do. I also don't think, you know, are people going to be ready or are they just going to rush? Are they just going to try to rush March twenty ninth to to make, you know, board, I don't, you know, I. I would hate to leave with nothing tonight when what we're going to end up with in in two weeks is. For most buildings going to be very close to this, to a particular. I guess I would rather approve, I would rather approve some requested exceptions by the administration in two weeks. Having set a date tonight than than the reverse.
Ian, go ahead.
Okay, correct me if I'm wrong here, I might just say some stuff wrong, but I believe for going back to the hybrid model, back in, I believe, November, December. You guys originally had a number instead of a date and I thought that would be a much better idea. You know, I think it was somewhere two, between two hundred and two hundred fifty cases, going back to hybrid learning. And I think setting a number rather than a specific date or just setting another specific date to come back and revisit this. I don't think making a decision to come back four days in person is the best idea based off of what, one week, two weeks at the end of this week of data. I know my little sister's seventh grade class, I read Smith, fifth of the kids are staying virtual no matter what, not going into cohorts or anything. So I don't know. Just wanted to throw it out there. I think maybe basing it off of numbers would be better than basing it off of dates.
Sure. Go ahead. No, you're okay.
And I like what you said about, I don't know if we can do this, but making it individual. Individualizing by school, you know, a certain school can go back this day and other school can go back the next day. I don't know if that's been done before. But it seems like a good idea if we can get that to work.
Thank you. So I I just want to clarify, Steve, when you spoke to, you know, the county burden rate is, I think it was ninety four today. You talked about the district burden rate, that those aren't positives, that's exposure rate, right? So just so it's clear that the county burden rate is talking about positive cases. The district burden rate is not talking about positive cases, it's exposure rate because there were two positives.
Would you like to come to the table? There you go. So see, here's our expert on this.
So if you, if you go to our public dashboard, there are two different burden rate charts. There's one for the county at the very bottom. That you're used to seeing. And then below that, there's, there's one of the burden rate for staff and students at GBAS. And that is taking into account the. The positive tests within that last fourteen days, so it is positivity.
Within the last fourteen days. Sorry.
Yes, within the last fourteen days.
So to clarify the difference between the ninety four and the number. Right?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
It's apples to apples, right? Those two numbers?
If they're calculated the same, but I mean, you have to also consider that the population. That we're considering with those twenty three thousand students and staff members looks different than the population of. Brown County at large, we obviously, we don't have infants, for example, right? We don't have seventy or eighty year olds either, so it it's not quite apples to apples, but the calculation is the same.
Sorry, so that's not the, that is, and I misunderstood that at one point too. That isn't the same metric calculated for the population within the boundary line of the district. It is a different thing.
That's correct. Yeah, the the population we're considering with that burden rate is an estimation of the number of of students and staff members we have. In in the district.
Okay, so so that's that's interesting. It's also, but yes, it's not apples to apples. So CDC is saying that. So the CDC is, I'm not suggesting that we necessarily change because we've been speaking the language of of fourteen days. But when we look at actual, since we actually have some federal guidances to where we're at. So CDC burden rate cuts cutoffs that they're looking at is red is a hundred. Per hundred thousand, seven day number. And of fifty is the seven day number below which you get to to yellow. So a a big part of why I feel. With with the understanding that we can come back and make a change if we need to, if if things spike. I believe the nu- the Brown County number, if you look at, if you look at today on the CDC seven day. And that's that's with the last seven days of Brown County cases off the state of Wisconsin website, the positives. There should be a hundred seven positives in the last seven days, which would work out to forty one point three one with the last seven days. Approximately forty one point three one off the last seven days of the state of Wisconsin's numbers for Brown County. So. We're already in, and so that fifty is is important from a CDC perspective because that's where. That's where the CDC is is saying that you can move to best social distancing possible with maintaining all their practices. Versus strict six feet or you have to reduce, right? And so we're we're there already, which is why I feel fairly comfortable about talking about something that might be. Close to a month from now. And then perhaps hearing some exception requests from the administration in two weeks.
Go ahead, Rhonda.
Thank you for clarifying that. And it's, I'm just trying to wrap my head around where we're at because we. We consistently spoke to the county burden rate and at one point we had put out numbers as far as we would go back full time. And now we're under that, so I'm just trying to understand the barriers for adding instructional time in the secondary level. So when you speak a lot about the vaccination dates and. You know, the the staff members that will receive this. as far as a staffing perspective, I go back to what was spoken to about retirements, resignations and leave of absences. So the vaccination contingency doesn't affect that. So I'm trying to understand, is it resignations, retirements and leave of absences? Or is it vaccination?
Sorry.
Okay, contingency, because when we're, when we're trying to understand really and truly what the barriers are to add instructional time for secondary. I'm hearing a lot of different things that keep coming into play. If it's a staffing issue and it's tied to a vaccination opportunity, what does that have to do with resignations, retirements and leave of absence? And and I'm asking that honestly, just to have an understanding.
So I'd say that the vaccination issue has to deal with the number of adults that are able to come to work on a daily basis and when vaccinated and they don't have to quarantine or isolate. Then they don't have to stay home so they can be onsite in the classroom. So that's the key benefit that we get from the vaccination process. It is staff right now that have to go home, have to isolate or have to quarantine will not have to do so after they've gone through that vaccination. So that's a significant reduction in the demand for substitutes on a daily basis. That's
Sorry, no, I just did it to you. Oh, okay, so what you're saying is staff gets two vaccinations, the staff that we know that will, because we don't have numbers for that. We don't know what that looks like. But staff that get two vaccinations will not have to quarantine if exposed.
That's what the CDC is telling us, yes.
But that is ultimately up to staff or is that up to the district to decide that?
That's a district decision that we will follow that CDC guideline and then we will not require quarantining or isolating.
But they can choose to quarantine if they want to?
No, they won't have to quarantine. Right now, we make them quarantine or isolate. So when they go through that health screener, if their symptom, if they're showing symptoms and they either haven't been vaccinated yet or haven't received their second vaccine, then they have to quarantine or isolate. Once they've gotten through that, then they won't have to.
But I I keep asking because I need, someone is asking me to get this clarified. But if they want to quarantine.
Sorry, I guess I didn't understand that. No, you don't get to choose whether or not you quarantine or isolate. Right now, our nursing staff tells you that you have to, so I, that that's not a choice.
So I'm gonna just, I guess add to what Andrew is saying. Is there a way to give some sort of directive that is on record, that is a more legitimate, that is official versus we're gonna wait and see what happens? Because again, the the clock is ticking. The burden rate is dropping, vaccinations are coming out, the clock is ticking on time. And I'm just wondering what would it look like, what it's the worst case scenario if we were to decide that we wanted to, let's say, put a date out there? Without having any information as far as staff at this school, you know, we're we're short at these schools. We don't have that information. When we don't have that information, it's really hard to take a a look at, even speaking about equity. We don't even know where, where we need assistance or support in the schools. I'm not having that information is is very frustrating because it's like we're just hoping again for the best and and looking for a plan. But I would, I would say that I'm not comfortable not having some sort of definitive, concrete direction to say, we need to know by this time, how many schools are going back? And if not, why not? Just some sort of of transparency on that would be great.
So I I hear what you're saying. And and I feel like maybe I'm, we'll say it in a different way than what Steve said, but every day that number changes. So you know, a teacher shows up to school, it's seven thirty, kids walk in the door at seven forty five. And the principal finds that teacher and says, hey, you're you're teaching fourth grade today. I know you're our librarian, but I know you're the music teacher, but you need to go cover that classroom. So every day, that number changes. If you were speaking, maybe I misunderstood you, but if you were speaking towards how many people do we need? We don't, we, we can't get that number because, and and that happens in a lot of our buildings. That was in an elementary building. So I agree with you that there's, there's still some information that we don't have. I I will say it again, I want our secondary schools to be back four days a week. I'd like to see it happen as soon as possible. I can't sit here and say, what would be the consequences if I picked April fifth? It 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 may have some negative consequences in some places. If I sit here and say April twelfth, that may also mean maybe we could have opened on the fifth. And I I just voted for the twelfth and and, you know, now we have this other week. So because we don't have some of that information, what I would hope people would take away from this discussion is they're, they're, they want to send secondary students back four days a week. Don't know exactly what that looks like yet. In two weeks, we will get a recommendation from Steve and the administration in letting them know that may maybe it doesn't have to be the same across the entire district. So if if Preble Science Department is shorthanded and that creates some unique challenges, that doesn't mean we don't want Lombardi Middle School to go back four days if they can implement it successfully. I don't feel like I could take a vote on anything today that wouldn't have negative unintended consequences in either direction. So, you know, i- if someone makes a motion tonight, I feel like I would have to vote no on it. Sit, not because I don't want the uh, the kids to come back, but because I don't have enough information sitting here today. Now, if Steve came back on the twenty second and said, talk to the administration, can't come back till May first. I would say, well, I'm sorry, I don't find that acceptable. And then I would vote for a motion that started sooner than that. But sitting here today with one day of, you know, of our hybrid model with full kids, all grade levels. I I don't think I have enough information, so I would, I would agree with you on that point. And so that's how I would personally, I'm going to play this situation out is that I I won't support a motion here tonight. I want Steve to come back with information from his administrative team, knowing that we want secondary students back four days a week. Tell us what that looks like and we'll, we'll go from there. And if we end up having to take a vote to move it back sooner than he recommends, because again, something extreme happened. I don't think that would be the case. But I would want the message that came out to to Andrew's point, the message that people should hear tonight is it's it's coming that our students will be back four days a week. Nobody asked us, and I haven't heard someone to say, send them back four days a week next week, right? And next week's spring break. But I mean, everyone's saying, hey, how about April fifth? How about April twelfth? How about something like that? I think that that's a good compromise. But again, I I need more information, so. Sure, you can respond and then we'll go to Laura.
Can you just share what, and I'm hearing you is like you're, you're drawing a line on the twenty second? If we, if you don't have, if if Steve doesn't come back with some sort of plan to get kids back, then you're, you're not accepting that. So what changes between now and then? Because we have a week of school and we have spring break. So what is that threshold for you that's so different than than it is right now?
I will have more information about the success of our two weeks that we've just had. I will have more information from Steve and his team on what exactly the staffing looks like, what the barriers are and more information that's presented than we have here today. So it it's nothing that magically changes as it is. More information that says, can we do it on the twenty ninth? Can we do it on the fifth? Can we do it on the twelfth? What's that recommendation? And again, you know, for me personally, if it's anything later than the twelfth, unless there's a, you know, a concrete reason that Steve's presents, I I would have see, have a hard time given all of the other information with burden rate and vaccines that we couldn't go back sooner than that.
Because, I mean, if the, what is the CDC, CDC say about burden rate? I mean, if the burden rate just continues to drop, and here we are sitting here and we're one of the only districts who still have our secondary students out because somehow we can't staff our buildings for some reason, and I'm concerned about that.
I'm I'm gonna go to Laura so that we're not.
Just to piggy, piggyback off what you said, Eric. I mean, the one, the one thing I have heard repeatedly over this last week is are from teachers who are basically pleading to just let us get our feet underneath us. Let our students coming back into schools adapt, acclimate back into the classroom. And I agree with you, after two weeks of that, that will give, you know, the, a certain amount of adjustment will have happened. We will know a ton more. So I am not in support of a motion tonight. I mean, I don't think our admin staff needs a motion to tell them how to do their jobs. You know, like, I just don't think it's necessary, so I won't be supporting that.
You know, I'm sorry. Go to Andrew and then I'll go to Ian.
All right, so we get, it comes, it comes back to the age old question. If you if you didn't make a motion, did you do it? And the answer, the answer legally to that question is no. Do I think that, you know, do I think that Steve would come back in two weeks with a crazy mix of dates spanning from a couple on March twenty ninth all the way to May first? No, I do not. But I'm not willing to, on something of of this importance, I can't go back to, I can't go back to people who are looking for some direction and say that we informally had nodded around the table and we're pretty sure that was gonna come back in two weeks is the fifth or the twelfth. I can't, I can't do that. I think there could be, I'm still, I'm still thinking about it. There could be a motion with, with some flexibility. Honestly, I don't, I don't know, as as someone who does want to see us reopen safely sooner and seeing the numbers go down, just with the possible weirdness of what may happen after spring break. I don't, I'm not particularly attached to maybe trying to get some forty back on the twenty ninth. I think between the fifth and the twelfth, we should do it. Eric, if you're saying you, you would be hard pressed to find a date after the twelfth that you're okay with, but you don't want to mess up the possibility of a school that's ready to go doing it on the fifth. What if we did direct the administration to come back with a, with a schedule that would return secondary to four day by April twelfth? Or have exception requests for us in two weeks? And then we, and then we would have a list of some, maybe some fifths, some twelfths and some requests for a delay. We'd still have to vote on that, but we would be leaving tonight with something.
Yeah, that's something I can think about. Go ahead, Ian.
All right. Originally, I wanted to say something about twenty minutes ago. I believe their backer mentioned something about the CC way red zone. I actually looked into that. Brown County is in the red zone. And according to the CDC, red zones over a hundred cases the past seven days. That means you should not get rid of cohorts. So going against this would basically go on against the CDC and just disregarding that. I also like, I believe your name's Mr. Vinhuval, Eric. You heard its teacher mention that getting their feet under the ground is very important to them. Now, if we choose to go back all four days on the twenty ninth, we would just have been going back in cohorts for one week only. And that's not really a good way to ease into it, if you know what I mean. And if we do, like Rhonda suggested, choose a date to go back, then there's the possibility that burden rates, everything, all these, we'd have to possibly change the date. And that would make people very happy personally. So I don't think, well, I think deciding on this in two weeks would be a personal opinion here.
Go ahead, Emily.
Sorry. So just kind of looking at if we were to make that return to four days a week, would there be an option that students who have currently elected to? And not that it were anything set in stone, but if students had elected, like I know I've elected to go back in a cohort setting, would students be able to change their mind even before a grading period ends? To go back to an online format? Because I know personally that I would not be interested in going full time with every other student, just due to like, I've got thirty kids in a class, how are we able to distance when I've not received a vaccine? And I may not be able to receive a vaccine just for safety concerns. What would that possibly look like?
If I can jump in and answer that, Emily, yes, we could certainly offer the opportunity to transition from onsite to virtual as part of that change in the return process.
So one of the things that I would struggle with, Andrew, you definitely made me think with with that potential motion. What I would struggle with is the possibility of putting a date out there and then changing it on people. I know there's a lot of, you know, we've got a lot of anxiety around thinking that one thing was gonna happen and then something else changes. And to leave here with, well, maybe it's the twelfth, it could be the nineteenth, and maybe it's the fifth. I don't think that that motion provides any sense of of a security or relief to anybody with with maybes or possibilities. So that would be, I I had a chance to think about that. Go ahead.
So I'm hearing the fifth and the twelfth seem to be the main dates we're tossing out there. Steve, if you come back on the twenty second, are those dates both still doable? So by waiting till the twenty second, we're not looking at pushing out the return date. We're just waiting till we have. I I work on projects in my job and I would never make a change to a project the day I put it in, unless it was really broken. I I guess we don't, we're gonna learn a lot this week. I'm assuming that is going to be really important information for you and your staff as you're trying to figure out how we return everybody to forty days a week. And I guess what I'm hearing is if we're looking at the fifth and the twelfth and waiting till the twenty second provides us with more information and doesn't impact the ability for those two days. I'm not sure why we wouldn't wait as opposed to putting a date out there and then changing it.
So I think your question was if we waited till the twenty second, would that push us out beyond the fifth or the twelfth for a start date? No, because I think back to Rhonda's a very original question there. You know, one of our our concerns last time was whether or not we could get the routing done on time. But as you heard from Pete, I, that was something we literally started working with our transportation carriers the next day. So they already have that in place. So that would not be an impediment for us. And that was probably our most significant hurdle to overcome when we looked at that last time.
I mean, I guess if we're looking at dates and we were gonna toss a date out there, I would say the twelfth, right? It gives us more time. But all that means is we could be delayed, and this is what you've been saying the whole time, Eric. By doing that, we could be delaying a week more than we need to if we waited till our next meeting and we had the information. So if we wait till the twenty second, we could potentially bring the students back a week earlier. What Eric's saying is, you know, the twelfth seems to kind of be the cutoff. So from my standpoint, I don't see why we wouldn't wait till the twenty second and get the information. I just, we, we've had all, we've, we've had all grades in our, our middle and high schools one day. We haven't even had our, our Thursday, Friday cohorts in the, in the classroom. I don't, how do we know what went, how do we know what went well? And how do we know what we need to fix? You know, how do we know what solutions we need to come up with for the issues that arose? Because they've only been in one day.
Go ahead, Rhonda.
So I, I would like us to be extremely specific and clear about what information we are looking for. If we are, if we are asking for information that we need or people are asking for information that they need, what are you asking for? So that we do not come back and sit here and hear, we don't have that, we can get that for you. That is not something we need to be able, we do not need to hear that. So what specifically would we be? Because it it sounds like we're, we're asking for something. But are we going to put, if we're not gonna do a motion, are we going to put something into something more specific of a direct directive? And what does that look like and what kind of information? I mean, I'm gonna take notes and ask, like, what would we expect to see coming back to us? So that we would know that we don't need additional information after that date. That's my fear.
Yep, that's fair. So I I can just answer.
Yep, that's fair. So I, I can just answer for myself. I mean, the two major pieces are, one, the success of this week. Right, where we've at least done one week of cohorts and how has that been going? And then, um, two would be more specifics around staffing stressors in the buildings. Whether that's available number of substitutes, I mean, there's probably data points within the staffing realm that I'm not even thinking of. So I don't wanna to mention all of them, but, um, you know, how many overloads and what does that look like? And are there certain departments or are there certain, uh, grade levels that, that are more stressed at certain buildings than others? Um, so, so really just, uh, uh, an overview of the staffing situation. And what, you know, i- if somebody said, hey, there's, right now we're talking about it vaguely. So I, I would like specifics around what that looks like, so that then I could pass a motion that accounted. And didn't put people into intentionally bad situations. Go ahead.
I would also say, well, another one is just the social distancing question. You know, once we have a sense of what, uh, a third or thirty-five percent of the, the student body is like in the school. And whether we can feasibly have that kind of social distancing if we bring all the cohorts back for four days a week. The other thing I think is. You know, this is a, a, a day to day data collection. This isn't, you know, I mean, like you said, Steve, it's every day, you don't know who's gonna be out and. Who's gonna be quarantined and who's gonna become positive and, um, there's just a lot of that going on. And so I don't, as a board, I mean, as a board member, I'm, I'm more interested in what. Steve and his staff have analyzed the situation to be. I don't need to make a decision based on, well, I need to see this number or this number or this number. I need a recommendation from people that are on the ground every day, talking to the people that are doing the work. And they say, yeah, we can do it, or no, we can't, we need this before we can do it. Or, you know, all of the, the unknowns that, um, uh, we won't know until we've had the kids actually in school. So that's kind of where my head is with that.
Go ahead, Laura.
I actually, I, I think that sounds sensible and I, I can get behind that. But I have a, actually a specific question and there was, that isn't gonna have a, a solid answer, but so. As we're working toward this, having four days a week. Do you anticipate that a lot of families in, um, if, if we choose a date and we say this is the date? Do you anticipate a lot of families might go choose back into virtual? When I say a lot, like, that's a big, I know that's a big, um, phrase, but, I mean, I feel like that could happen. And that would change numbers a lot.
Yeah, I don't know how many would and, and you know, again, I'll offer this and it's. It's for what it's worth. Remember that in the mitigation factors, the CDC said. You need to physically distance to the greatest extent possible. That can mean not at all, right? There isn't a compliance mechanism for that. The other ones are, are pretty clear cut, right? Facial covering, hand washing, cleaning and sanitizing, right? Those, those are things that, that we, uh, it's. Much easier for us to understand what's compliant and what's not. When they say physical distancing to the greatest extent possible. You know, it can be six feet or six inches. And you're still complying with it because that's the best you can do, given the situation. So, uh, as, as, uh, you know, Emily was just sharing just a moment ago. We may very well have some, some students and or their parents who look at it and say. If you can't meet those physical distancing requirements, we would like to choose to go from onsite to virtual. We could definitely support that. I don't know how many that would be. Uh, obviously that could change, um, our ability to physically distance for those who return. Uh, and, and again, though, keep in mind that that winds up being on a, a case by case basis. I know talking to, to secondary administrators, there are. Some courses, some departments that were very easily, easy to physically distance. Because it just happened that the balance was very even. The cohort was about this size, the B cohort was about the same size. The offsite cohort was large enough that these two had no problem physically distancing in the room. Elementary, you can walk down a, a hallway and you can have. Eight kids in that classroom and sixteen kids in this classroom because it depends on who chose to go in which direction. So, uh, it, it's, it's not really, uh, you can give a blanket answer. When you look at aggregate numbers, but it doesn't tell you the story of what's happening in the classroom, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
Okay, thanks.
Go ahead, uh, Rhonda, and then we'll go to Ian.
I just wanna put this out there because it's on my mind and maybe it's a ridiculous question, but it's on my mind. So what if it's August twenty seventh and the burden rate is? Seventy-five? I mean, it's not entirely impossible. Are we using the same metrics? Are we using the same approach? Are we? What are we doing with that in general?
I mean, I, I, uh, if I knew what was gonna happen in August. What, what I, I can tell you what my general response is to that question is that by that point. Every adult that wants the vaccine will have had it. Uh, there's been conversations about. You know, students being able to get that. I, I think we'll be back five days a week, uh, and not be making decisions necessarily on a burden rate at that point. That's just my prediction based upon everything that I'm hearing, but. I don't know.
So we're not making that decision based on a burden rate anymore is what I'm hearing.
I said that I am not a doctor, that is my prediction, but if I would.
I guess what I'm hearing is today we are not making a decision based on a burden rate anymore. We're not even, we're not entertaining that at all.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, things are, are different now. We've got. You know, we've have a lot of people in our community that have had COVID. We have a lot of people that are immunized and getting immunized. I think the, we're getting better at treating COVID. And when people are vaccinated, even if they, even if they get COVID. Having been vaccinated, their cases are much less, um, they're not hospitalized for, for COVID if they've had the vaccine. So I think it's, um, and I, I mean, I, I would agree with Eric and that it, that, uh. Um, and I, I think just like now, I mean, I think the, the burden rate, we're, we're not paying as much attention to because of the reasons I just said. And because then we also have really good mitigation strategies in place. Um, so to me, it's a different situation than it was back in September when we had. You know, the burden rates that we had, or even in November and December when they were so high. And oh, and then the last thing, and we do have a, we're gonna have a meeting and talk about it if we get above a thousand. I mean, so it's not, you know, that, that burden rate hasn't completely gone away, but, but, um, as I think I've said. In meetings before. To, um, individuals, the. I lost my train of thought, um. Lost it. Sorry. Oh, yeah, just, uh, to me, it's, it's, you know, how are we doing internally? Once we open, you know, and then, and then we get that, you know, we made a decision when to open. Once we're open and we have the data that are coming in, let's say, you know, our case burden is going up fairly quickly. Well, maybe we better look at that. Are, um. We can't, we don't have enough adults in the room because we have too many people quarantining, or maybe we should look at that. But it, it feels like rather than just having this, this, uh. This burden rate where we say, oh my God, we gotta close now. Well, if things are going well and our district burden rate isn't as bad as. The community or, you know, all sorts of different variables could be in play. So that's, that's kind of how my thinking is, is rather than have. You know, oh, it's seventy-five, we can't open, or it's five hundred, we have to close. It's like, well, you know, let's use some more information and make those decisions.
Go ahead, Laura.
So August is six months from now. Think of where we were six months ago, right? So a lot of things could happen. And I personally still pay attention to the burden rate. A lot, I think a lot of people, uh, do, um, watch those numbers anxiously every day. So, um, you know, I think we will always take that into consideration. But all these other factors, I mean, there's a half a dozen different, very important factors in these decisions. Um, that is how we're making the decisions now. I mean, six months ago was all about the burden rate. Um, but that's, that's, um, very different now. So, um, that's the sort of my, my take on that.
Go ahead, Andrew. Ian, why don't you go ahead? I, I promised you you'd go next and then I skipped to Laura.
Thank you, I appreciate it. So I just had a few little things to talk about. Burden rate, that's important because, you know, open teams less likely to affect younger students. But taking into a multitude of statistics into consideration would be a good idea. I liked one of you mentioned earlier about if we did decide to switch to all four days in person, then more people would. Go virtual, like I said before. I don't know if using a seventh grade class is a good idea. But I, at least ten percent, fifteen percent of people would decide to just stay virtual the whole time. I know, uh, going off of CDC recommendations, you should be six feet apart, doesn't mean you have to, but it still means you should. My mom's classroom has twenty-one kids in it at weekly act, not that big. Not, kids aren't six feet apart, but still, you should, should try to at least. Doesn't mean kids should be six inches apart, but. And I think. How can I say this? When you guys voted for kids to go back to school in cohorts, one of the big things that you wanna do is to give them hope, give them something to look forward every day. I mean, one of the people I called in at the beginning, I believe the first person said her daughter totally looked forward to going to school every day. And I think that's a really good thing that you've accomplished by going back in cohorts. So.
Thanks, Ian. Go ahead, Andrew. So I do, I do just wanna clarify because, um, it's important that we're looking at the, the numbers accurately as far as, as burden rate. But, uh, Josh, am I, am I correct that the seven day brown, the seven day brown county number? When you add it up and do the, do the math would put us, uh, a little above forty? Uh, I, I come up, unless I did it wrong, I came up with a hundred seven cases, new positives in Brown County adding up seven days. I divide by, um. Two point, uh, two point five, approximately two point five nine, I get about forty-one. For a seven day, for a seven day number. Ian was talking about a, uh, a fourteen day number, which we've mostly been using. But the CDC, it's, it's an important number because the CDC does say. That that's a point where the older kids can move from. Strict six foot social to best distancing to best possible social distancing, but I believe, I believe that we're under that.
Forty-one point one if we were doing a seven day rolling average of the burn rate.
Okay, so here, here's what I would like to, since we have, since we have to have a, we have to create us, we have to create a special meeting anyways. I think it might serve the purposes of. Taking any chance of, of a meeting not happening off the table. Uh, with, with a motion to direct the administration to return. With a list of proposed. Proposed switch to four person date, uh, for. A list of proposed days to switch to four days a week. On March twenty-second. So that's kind of why, so I'm, I'll just do it. Uh, I make a motion, uh, that a special board. Meeting be called for March twenty-second. And that the administration. Be directed to provide the board with a list of transition dates. From cohort to four day per week for, uh, for secondary schools at that meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Cause we can't vote at what would be otherwise a work session meeting. Yeah, I would presume it'd be a special right before. I have tried, I've, I've, I think it's silly too, but I've been told that we have a policy that strictly prohibits a vote at a. With them, that's why we always have to create a.
No, I understand.
Yeah. So I'll, I'll just say that, um. I understand the need for a special meeting. I'm not gonna pass a motion that tells the administration how to do their job. They're very clear, they're listening to this conversation. I'm not gonna support that motion because that's gonna happen and they don't need a motion to tell them to do that.
Can we have Beth put the motion up on the screen? I wanna make sure, because we're writing motions on the fly here. I wanna make sure we got the motion right for the meeting minutes and for. If there's gonna be a vote.
Alright, uh, if there's no other discussion, um, this.
Needs to be a third path at the end of where you have schools. Andrew added at that meeting.
Uh, I think it was proposed transition dates. I'm not. Yeah. I'm not, I'm not ruling out that, I mean, obviously, and I, I, I have told people this who are very. Interested in going back to four days, I have said in a district with forty buildings. There will be some buildings someday that probably won't be able to open. After elementary, so whoever it is, that will probably happen a, a few times. But I, yeah, I think, I, I'm, I'm done with. Do I think without this motion, this meeting would still happen and the same thing would be provided at it? Yeah. But I'm, I'm done governing by informal consensus at the board table anymore. I'm, I'm done with it, I'll never do it again.
Yeah, Andrew, did you, I, I wrote down that you said, um, proposed transit, transition dates from the cohort model. To four days a week.
Yes, I believe I said that. And I, if, if, I'll, I'll, yes, that's, that's my intent. Uh, go ahead, Rhonda, and then Laura.
So I, I would also like to speak to that. I don't believe this, we're telling them how to do their jobs, but it is a fact. That when we were told there would be something, it, it, we have been burned. That's a fact. Since I've been on this board, we have been burned. And so I don't believe there's anything. I guess this isn't some sort of, um, you know, sinister plot, like, you know, evil laugh. To get them to do their job, it's just we have been burnt. And so we need, I believe, to have a directive if we can, and it's, and it's not a, you know, do this, do your job, it's. It relates to the fact that we have been burned when we have asked for things. And so I don't believe it would be a problem to have something just more official on record.
Go ahead, Laura.
I'm just gonna repeat myself and agree that, that I, I don't find an emotion necessary in this case at all. And I know that our staff will do as they, as we have discussed. And, um, I feel like it is telling them to do their job when they don't really need that. They've been working under. Crisis mode for months and producing amazing work and data. And constantly getting us the, the stuff that they need, we need to do our jobs. And this is just an example of an unnecessary motion as far as I'm concerned, so I'll be voting no.
Alright, um, so we have, uh, if, if there's no other discussion, I, we, this is the first action item. So we are able to, to take a vote on this right now as we're transitioning on the agenda. So Beth, are you, how would you prefer to have to have us take this vote?
Um, can we do a?
Voice vote.
Yeah, let's do a voice vote.
Okay, whenever you're ready then. Oh, I'm, oh, I'm sorry, Laura, I missed you.
Oh, I'm, oh, I'm sorry, Laura, I missed you. Go ahead.
Sure. Okay, so this is one of those things, I, during my interview, I asked a little bit about um the culture of the organization and the board, and this is one of those things where um, I'm used to these types of meetings in Oneida, and um, shout out to General Tribal Council there, but I, this would be absolutely no disrespect to the administration, but I think that um, for me, I'd look at it as, and again, this is my first board meeting, so I'm kind of like, I'm not really sure how to try to hear. But um, I know um, with being involved with boards in the past, sometimes it was helpful just for that level of um, not that it wouldn't happen, but to have that documentation, and so that the people that are um, pushing for this, for the schools to open, they would see that the board is taking, looking at it very seriously. Which, again, I, I think that we are, and that's my understanding. But I didn't understand the, the negative component of supporting this motion in terms of telling them how to do their job. I just looked at it as something that would be um, like an action item for them to do, that's being documented for um, the constituents and people in the community to see that, that the board is taking it seriously to look at it. So I was being supportive of that, and my apologies if it seems that it's not trusting um, administration to do the job, because it's not the case.
Thank you for that. All right, um, if we're ready, then Beth, uh, we can take a voice vote.
Thank you. McCoy?
No.
Becker?
Hi.
Smith?
No.
Layton and Warren?
Hi.
Sit in a cow?
I do believe it is our job to drive the administration. And so I'm going to vote, yes, I.
Warren?
No.
No. So the motion fails four to three. Um, moving on, on the agenda.
I do have a, I do have a point of order. At what point, what, what will cause the creation of the special board meeting, which is still required despite this motion failing?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
Okay, so we're going to, we, the, the motion failed four to three to direct the administration to do it. And what they said they're going to do anyways, so they're going to do it anyways. They're going to have, right, they're going to come back in two weeks. But a special board meeting will, will be needed then, so we can vote on the plan that they're going to present anyways. So what is the mechanism to create that meeting?
Knowing the direction that the board wants to go, I'll need to request that of President Bannon and Vice President Warren.
And then that'll be posted, okay.
Yeah, so if a special board meeting isn't scheduled next week, it'll be on me a hundred percent. In two weeks, sorry, yeah, twenty-second.
Yeah, with, with spring break, then, I'm presuming that will have to be posted maybe sooner than I like.
We follow the same posting process.
Yeah, but will, will the three of you be meeting on, for example, the fifteenth, if you already did it? You will, despite, okay.
Yes.
And will you be making sure that you're going to specifically add no later than the twelfth with that direction?
Well, I, again, I think Steve has been listening to the conversation, the administration has been listening to the conversation, so they'll come forward with their recommendation. Again, we have the ability to then take all of the information that we have and, and be able to then make a motion one way or the other, so. Yeah. All right, um, so we're going to uh, transition then uh, to letter B in the agenda. Um, we're going to take our votes in a couple of different ways here. So uh, for item B, we will take an online vote. Um, items C through J will take a voice vote, their um administrative items relating to our health insurance plans and, and we'll be able to, to go through those with a voice vote, and then when it comes to our policies, we do, we will take an online vote for those as well. Um, Rhonda, would you be able to read the motion for item B, please?
I move that the resolution for an authorization and appointment of an independent hearing officer as presented be approved.
Second.
Uh, discussion, Andrew.
So I, um, while I intend, if I'm still on the board, I think it's very likely that I would vote no on the reauthorization in July. Uh, I'm voting yes strictly because we're between a rock and a hard place with certain federal regulations that are under review that have not yet been dealt with, and we don't have any better option right now. My long-term position has not changed about uh, independent hearing officers, but we have no, no choice for this. And it's something that by state law automatically sunsets and has to be renewed every year, so. Just to be clear that my I vote is uh, at this point, I intended to be a one-off vote on that.
All right, Beth, if you want to open up the voting. Um, Laura, this will be your first time. We've had some technical difficulties in the past, so if you can make it work, great. If you can't, you can just give Beth your voice vote, but hopefully it works for you.
Thank you, it popped up.
Awesome.
Our votes have been entered, and the motion has carried with all board members voting in favor.
Okay, uh, motion carried seven to zero. We're having a hard time picking up on that mic, Beth. I don't know if it's the mic or but we, we got it past seven-zero. All right, um, so the next uh, few votes, C through J, will be voice votes. Uh, go ahead, Rhonda.
I move that the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two health insurance rates for the five-hundred-dollar deductible plan, fifteen-hundred high deductible health plan with a health reimbursement account, and the minimum essential plan for active employees as presented be approved.
Second.
Uh, I guess I can do this part right? Oh, oh, and are you going to do a voice vote that way, or can we do a? Melissa, can we, can we do a?
You're, you're going to have to, Beth's going to have to call individual, because of your need to abstain from some of these motions, Eric.
Okay, so, well, you'll have to call through these, thank you.
Okay, Smith?
Hi.
Warren?
Hi.
Banden Hoover?
I'm going to abstain, because I have a family member that's affected by this plan.
Sit in a cow?
Hi.
Layton and Warren?
Hi.
McCoy?
Hi.
Becker?
Hi.
Motion passed six to zero with one abstention. Go ahead, Rhonda.
I moved that the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two health insurance rates for the five-hundred per person deductible plan, five-hundred-dollar deductible plan, fifteen-hundred high deductible health plan with a health reimbursement account, the minimum essential plan, and the prescription plan for retirees as presented be approved.
Second.
Go ahead, Beth.
McCoy?
Hi.
Banden Hoover?
Hi.
Layton and Warren?
Hi.
Becker?
Hi.
Warren?
Hi.
Smith?
Hi.
Sit in a cow?
Hi.
Motion passed seven-zero.
I move that the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two dental insurance rates for active employees as presented be approved.
Second.
Beth?
Becker?
Hi.
Layton and Warren?
Hi.
McCoy?
Hi.
Banden Hoover?
Abstain.
Warren?
Hi.
Smith?
Hi.
Sit in a cow?
Hi.
Motion passed six-zero with one abstention.
I move that the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two dental insurance rates for retirees as presented be approved.
Hi. Oh, second. Oh, my God.
Go ahead, Beth.
Sit in a cow?
Hi.
Smith?
Hi.
Warren?
Hi.
McCoy?
Hi.
Banden Hoover?
Hi.
Layton and Warren?
Hi.
Becker?
Hi.
Motion passed seven-zero.
I move that the contract with MetLife as the life insurance plan administrator be extended as presented be approved.
Second.
Beth?
Layton and Warren?
Hi.
Becker?
Hi.
Warren?
Hi.
McCoy?
Second, no, sorry, that's a ju, that's a joke. Hi.
Sit in a cow?
Hi.
Smith?
Hi.
Banden Hoover?
Abstain. Motion passed six-zero with one abstention.
I move that the long-term disability plan administrator be awarded to MetLife effective July first, twenty-twenty-one, as presented be approved.
Second.
Beth?
Smith?
Hi.
Warren?
Hi.
Banden Hoover?
Abstain.
Sit in a cow?
Hi.
Becker?
Hi.
McCoy?
Hi.
Layton and Warren?
Hi.
Motion passed six-zero with one abstention.
I move that the district shall pay one hundred percent of the cost associated with making long-term disability benefits available to all full and part-time employees working more than five and one-half, five and a half hours per week, as presented be approved.
Second.
Beth?
Banden Hoover?
I'm going to abstain.
Smith?
Hi.
Warren?
Hi.
Layton and Warren?
Hi.
Sit in a cow?
Hi.
McCoy?
Hi.
Becker?
Hi.
Motion passed six-zero with one abstention.
I move that the employee handbook be modified to reflect that all regular, full and part-time staff working more than five and one-half hours per week as presented be approved.
Second.
Beth?
Becker?
Hi.
McCoy?
Hi.
Layton and Warren?
Hi.
Banden Hoover?
Abstain.
Warren?
Hi.
Smith?
Hi.
Sit in a cow?
Hi.
Passed six-zero with one abstention.
I move that the staff student and staff minor child relations policy, five-twenty-two-point-six, as presented be approved.
Second.
Beth?
Smith?
Hi.
Layton and Warren?
Hi.
Warren?
Hi.
Banden Hoover?
Hi.
Sit in a cow?
Hi.
McCoy?
Hi.
Becker?
Hi.
Motion passed seven-zero.
I move that the staff conflicts of interest policy, five-twenty-two-point-four, as presented be approved.
Second.
Beth?
Becker?
Hi.
McCoy?
Hi.
Layton and Warren?
Hi.
Banden Hoover?
Hi.
Warren?
Hi.
Smith?
Hi.
Sit in a cow?
Hi.
Motion passed seven-zero.
I move that the staff conflicts of interest anti-nepotism policy, five-twenty-two-point-fourty-one, as presented be approved.
Second.
McCoy?
Hi.
Banden Hoover?
Hi.
Becker?
Hi.
Warren?
Hi.
Smith?
Hi.
Sit in a cow?
Hi.
Layton and Warren?
Hi.
Motion passed seven-zero.
Hey, Eric, um, I just wanted to say something about all these votes we just took. Sometimes if a person didn't see their last meeting, these just feels like we're just like going through, and there's no discussion, but just want to remind everyone that these were all discussed at another meeting um thoroughly, and now we're just voting, so.
I move that the student government policy for forty-four-point-one-point-one, is that right? Okay. Okay, four-forty-one-point-one, I'm going to start over. I move that the student government policy, four-forty-one-point-one, as presented be approved.
Second.
Beth?
Becker?
Hi.
Sit in a cow?
Hi.
Smith?
Hi.
Banden Hoover?
Hi.
Layton and Warren?
Hi.
Warren?
Hi.
McCoy?
Hi.
Seven-zero. All right, that takes us to the final agenda item, which is the agenda setting. Um, as has been talked about quite a bit tonight, uh, we have a work session on March twenty-second. There will also be a special meeting on March twenty-second. Um, with that said, any other agenda items um that people are interested in adding? Go ahead, Brenda.
Um, I was interested in hearing more about our summer school plans. Was wondering if we could just get an update on that.
Andrew?
With, with regards to, to class size, um although I do believe I made a, um, I introduced a motion in the proper schedule uh, of things, I do recognize that the primary focus tonight had to be on um reopening. That being said, and I've, I've always said this, the importance of, the importance of class size is whether I'm continuing on the board or not after April, I would like to know and set, uh, what is the latest point that if the board, whomever it may be, wanted to make binding directions with regard to class size rules, that it would, it would be relevant still for the next semester to be scheduled? Is that June? Is that July? Is that already too late? What, what would that be? For example, if, if the board wished to make a motion that any class size over thirty needed board approval, um if that was the case, when, when would that have to be made before it would become moot for because the year would, the fall would be tentatively scheduled?
Realistically, before the start of the school year, I, obviously, the sooner that the board would make a decision like that, the uh, more planning time we would have to deal with it.
As I would assume, though, we're, I mean, we're asking for course requests already in May, is it? Or I mean, maybe a little later this year because of COVID, but I mean, probably not later than May, we'd be starting to try to schedule that.
So they'll be building the master schedule over the course of the summer?
So that'd be a reasonable thing to put on a, on a, to, to have on a June agenda?
I'd suggest no later than a May work session. We're going to need more time than that.
Okay, I, I mean, I was even probably okay with, with June. Um, if you think May is, I mean, I'm, my, my point, the, the biggest point, the most important point was I was afraid that maybe, maybe even April would be too late. So if, I mean, I'm okay with May, I'm okay with June. May?
I'd put it on the May work session.
May work session would be for the June meeting because of the new order, okay? So what is that? Is that, it goes on there unless someone objects, and then we'd have to vote, but if no one objects, it's going to be on for June? May, may, may slash June, agent cycle, okay?
Right, anything else? With that, I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
So move. Second.
All in favor?
I.
Hi.
Opposed? All right, and that ends our merge board meeting. Thank you very much, everybody.
Bye Laura.
Hi, good night.
Good night.